I'd like to call to action the Human Service Commission Regular Meeting Thursday, March 25. It is now 9:35 a.m. And because I've seen everyone sign on, our roll call is complete. All commissioners are present. So I'm going to move on to item two, the adoption of our agenda. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item three, adoption of the February 11th special meeting minutes. Can I have a motion for adoption of the February 11th special meeting minutes?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Now turning to Trent Rohr, our Executive Director, item four.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. You can hear me okay?
Good morning, Mr. Rohr.
Good morning, Commissioner McCray. Always nice to hear your voice.
Good morning.
I'm good to be heard.
Good morning, Commissioner Semel. So we haven't met for about six weeks, so a lot to update you all on. Let me start with some pretty good news out of the federal government. I haven't said that in a very long time. Probably four years. So the, as you know, the federal government or Congress and the President signed the American Rescue Act, which is the $1.9 trillion COVID recovery and stimulus plan. Significant financial impact in a good way for states and local governments. So I just want to walk you through a pretty high level, the sort of the level of investment, federal dollars that's coming to not only the states, but also locally and to families and individuals in the city. So $26 billion in fiscal recovery funds are going to go to the state of California. The legislature, of course, will appropriate it through their normal budget process. The funds can be used for specific purposes related to COVID. So responses to the disease. So things like vaccine administration, testing, but also to address negative economic impacts as a result of COVID, which of course is a big, really wide sort of criteria that could be spent on a lot of things. So to fill gaps, to support eviction prevention, there's just a lot of things that could be used for. The idea was, of course, because of the economic slowdown due to COVID, state revenue, state tax revenue was lower nationwide in states, although it's proven not to be the case in California. I'll get to that in a bit. So $26 billion in basically general funds to the state of California. An additional $16 billion in fiscal recovery funds to local governments in California, which translates to about $620 million to San Francisco. We get an allotment for being a county, and we also get an allotment for being a city. So $600 million to be spent, I believe, over two years. That's the allowable runway. So obviously, a huge windfall for us. And similar to the state, the money can be used in a pretty wide range of investments. There's also a lot of targeted assistance in that federal bill coming to San Francisco and the state. Notably for us and our families and households is $2.2 billion statewide in California for rental assistance. San Francisco's share is $56 million. And that's through basically a state and locally administered program to help renters pay for back rent, for utilities, basically a massive eviction prevention program. San Francisco has decided there were options to whether to administer it locally or have the state administer it, and San Francisco chose to do it locally. And the Mayor's Office of Housing and Community Development is the lead. We, of course, are working closely with them to make sure that HSA clients can avail themselves of that, those resources should they need them, which, you know, we imagine they will. $40 billion in unemployment insurance benefits. So that's both extending the benefits out for more months and also to increasing the number of weeks they can receive it. And it's also the enhanced or the additional unemployment allotment. There are about 360,000 or so unemployment claims in San Francisco. So that money will go, there's a significant number of individuals in the city. There's also direct cash payments to individuals. So this is in the statewide, $35 billion, but it's direct cash assistance of $1,400 to qualifying taxpayers. And if you paid taxes and you're in one of our programs, you certainly qualify because your income doesn't exceed the threshold. There's also significant money for tax credits, the earned income tax credit, the child tax credit, childcare tax credit, et cetera. So we did a quick, well, I didn't do it. Our planning team, policy and planning team, did a quick back of the envelope analysis on sort of what is the personal impact of this investment? So you take a family of, a family of four. So I think we pegged this as two adults and two kids. So they would get a stimulant, the stimulant, and they're, they meet the income threshold, which I believe is $125,000 and below in terms of annual income. So that's basically our families. So a family of four would get $1,400 per person, so $5,600. They would get a childcare tax credit of $3,600 per child under five. So that's 7,200 for two kids. They would get an earned income, a maximum earned income tax credit of up to $5,900. A child independent tax credit of $1,400. A local working families credit of $500 and a Golden State stimulus payment of $600. You add all of that up, and that is a cash transfer combined federal, state, and local dollars of $21,220. So a family of four, a low-income or moderate-income family of four in San Francisco through the federal action, the governor's action, and some local investments that I'll talk about in a second, would get 20, would get over $21,000. So clearly, we're not talking about a small investment for families. We're talking about a significant amount of money for a year to really help families navigate the pandemic, deal with unemployment loss, and you know, sort of general economic relief. And, you know, they call it a stimulus act because that money will be spent in the economy, most likely. You know, the studies, studies of sort of economic multiplier effects by Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and other thing, and then think tanks, you know, lower-income families spend that money. They don't, they're not saving it. They need it. They need to spend it. And so that's, that will act as a stimulus, but also, of course, more importantly, in terms of our mission, really provide significant help to our families. In addition, the feds, through the stimulus, extends the 15% increase in CalFresh benefits through September. And that's 27, about $27 per person per month. So it's about $300 million to CalFresh recipients across the state. So, of course, you know, that's just great news. And we're very pleased that it came through with such support for families and for state and local government. Now moving to the state, I mentioned the Golden State stimulus, which was the governor's effort to provide state dollars to families that I mentioned. It's $600, a $600 one-time payment. In terms of unemployment insurance, I mentioned the federal extension, and I mentioned 360,000 open unemployment claims in San Francisco. EDD reached out to us and let us know that they intend to initiate mandatory reemployment workshops for recipients as a condition of getting the unemployment benefits. And that will begin April 5th. The reason I mention it is because we intend to participate with EDD in these workshops to offer eligible claimants Jobs Now services and potential job placements. So it's a good way for us to, you know, onboard a significant number of people into our Jobs Now program. Let me shift, I'll go to state-led priorities in a second. I want to shift a little bit to local COVID impacts, and then I'll go back to some state-led updates. So as, as you know, we're doing much, much better in terms of COVID and the virus, managing the virus. As of March 23rd, we met the state's criteria to advance to the less restrictive orange tier based on our metrics, the various metrics around equity, around vaccine, around hospitalizations. Which means we can open non-essential offices up to 25% capacity, outdoor service for bars and breweries, family recreation, things like that. Slowly ratcheting up normal activity. Most businesses will be allowed up to 50% occupancy inside. Gyms, fitness centers, things like that. I note this just because there might be questions about, well, how does this impact HSA and our return to the office in terms of our employees? And at this point, we're citywide holding to the Mayor's initial directive of maximizing telecommuting through the end of June. So our operations in terms of where we're located and where we're doing our work aren't going to, is not going to change due to movement into the orange tier, and we anticipate moving into the yellow tier within a few weeks. Which again, opens, basically wraps up more things in terms of opening. Our metrics look great. You know, the eight metrics that we, that we track in terms of healthcare, disease, disease control. Let's see, five of the eight are in the green now, three of the eight are in the yellow, which is level two. Everything, those big things were level four red. We're back in sort of, in terms of virus and disease, we're back to where we were in November, pre, sort of holiday surge. And the numbers continue to trend down. One concern that our partners in health sort of remains a concern of our partners in health is the variants. The variants from Brazil, the variants from the UK, and the impact in terms of virus acquisition based on the variants. Not enough of a concern to project another surge. It's just sort of a hovering kind of something they're watching. And they can sit, continue to accelerate vaccines to residents of San Francisco, of course. And then other local, local happenings or local activities related to COVID. A big one for us, of course, is what does it look, what is sort of our disaster response at HSA look like? As you know, we had the lead role in citywide food support and coordination, and we had, have a lead role in the operation or the setup and the oversight of the hotel system for homeless individuals, the shelter-in-place hotels. In terms of the food support and coordination, we're moving that operation and those funds outside of the COVID command structure and over into HSA to manage. It'll be overseen by the Department of Aging, Disability and Aging Services, DOS, under HSA, which means we are overseeing the contracts, we'll be doing the procurement and managing the investments, which are over $30 billion, excuse me, $30 million in food supports through food bank, through delivered meals, through food pantries, things like that. So that'll be managed, again, under HSA. Contracts to be approved by the DOS Commission, not by this commission. Second big area is our shelter-in-place hotels. We are beginning, well, not beginning, we continue our planning towards what we're calling the shelter-in-place hotel wind down and demobilization, meaning we're working with several partners, our partners in the Department of Homelessness and Supportive Housing, our partners in the new, newly-formed SIP rehousing branch in the COVID Command Center. And the idea is to move over 2,000 people out of hotels into some sort of permanency, whether that's permanent supportive housing, their own apartments with a rental subsidy, short-term rental subsidy, a return back home, sort of a whole range of interventions that help folks, basically help folks who were homeless prior to the pandemic. We temporarily ended their homelessness by placing them in hotels. We don't want to return them to homelessness. We want to place, we want to house them. Sort of create, create proverbial lemons out of, or lemonade out of lemons, which really is a great opportunity for us, frankly, to, to house a significant number of people. And that's, it's a lot of work. The goal is to get most of individuals housed out of the hotels by the end of September. That's when the federal FEMA money ends. It's an ambitious goal. Should we not meet it, the sort of secondary goal would be the end of December, and we're working with our budget teams to figure out the cost, the local cost of sort of extending out some hotels through December. Other items sort of related to COVID. Matt Ha, Supervisor Matt Haney, who's chairing the Budget Committee, Mayor Breed, announced an agreement on a spending plan that's tied to a current-year budget surplus of about $125 million. The spending plan is focused on COVID relief, relief and recovery support for small businesses, arts and cultural organizations, supporting youth and families, specifically summer learning, housing security, and there's some money also to prevent overdoses, which have increased simultaneously with COVID. Whether that's causal or not, we don't really know, but certainly the data is there showing that overdoses are increased. Couple of staffing, a few staffing changes citywide that I just want to note for you because of our agency's interaction with these departments. The first is the Office of Economic and Workforce Development. The Director Joaquin Torres was appointed city assessor to backfill for Kermit Chu, who was appointed city administrator by the mayor. The backfill for Joaquin is a woman by the name of Kate Sofis. And Kate was co-founder of SF Made, which was a sort of a public-private initiative helping to sort of look at a resurgence of local manufacturing and employment diversity in San Francisco. She was a member of the Economic Recovery Task Force and is well-versed in sort of local economic development. We look forward to partnering with her and making sure that our job-ready individuals benefit from economic recovery in San Francisco. And also, as you probably read in the paper or heard somewhere else, Abigail Stewart-Kahn, the interim Director of the Department of Homelessness and Supportive Housing, resigned her last day, I think is next week. There is a search right now for a permanent replacement. And in the interim, Sam Dodge, who was a deputy director at Home Assistance and Supportive Housing before moving to his role in Department of Public Works, will be the interim director. Obviously, we're working closer than ever with that department, given the COVID response on the housing front for homeless individuals. And then lastly, Mayor Breed appointed Carol Eisen to serve as the new Citywide Human Resources Director to replace Mickey Callahan, who retired, and that appointment was approved by the board this week. Carol and this agency have a long history of working together on labor relations. So we're very pleased with that appointment as well, for continuity's sake for the city. Let me shift gears back up to the state. I just want to mention a couple of state legislative and budget priorities that we're working on that look promising at this point. One is statewide service for statewide allowance for counties to use telephonic signatures for all of our programs, which is just sort of in response to COVID and the ability for our clients to renew their benefits or apply remotely. Allowing telephonic signatures, of course, is a key to that, which means they don't have to come in and do a web signature to get their benefits. That's one large proposal. Another one is, or two related to child welfare, actually three related to child welfare. One is cash assistance for families whose children are in foster care and who are on CalWorks. And so if a child or children are removed from a family that's low-income, they would lose eligibility for CalWorks because they would no longer have children in the home. What the bill proposal does is provides six months of continued cash support for those parents while their children are in foster care. If we deem that that cash assistance will support reunification efforts. Very often, low-income families who are engaged in child welfare, if you take away their cash, that's a sort of further hindrance to remediating whatever conditions led to children being removed. And so that's something we're supporting. There's an $50 million budget ask to begin to build a prevention infrastructure to allow counties to better implement the Federal Family First Prevention Services Act, which, as you probably remember, replaces the federal 4E funding system in foster care and allows for federal dollars for the first time to be used in a really robust way for prevention services prior to removal. And the old, the old system, we could only get federal dollars once we remove children, which was a bit of a perverse incentive. So this $50 million, $50 million in state money would allow us to sort of build up that prevention infrastructure to begin to draw down that federal dollar, those federal dollars when California opts into the act later in 2021. And then the last is additional general fund to support eligible non-minor dependents. And so these are individuals, kids aged 18 to 21, who would normally have emancipated from the foster care system, but would keep them until age 21. We're actually keeping them even longer now due to COVID. We're not emancipating anyone out of the system, so that caseload is building in terms of numbers because we're keeping them in care under COVID. Okay, now within our divisions, unfortunately, I have an announcement. We, our Communications Director, Chandra Johnson, who you all know, she's presented in front of the commission many times. She left the agency for an opportunity in the private sector. Her last day was in early March. She, we're really grateful for her numerous contributions. She really built the agency's communications infrastructure. We didn't have an office from the ground up. Developing client-focused communication channels, so websites, social media platforms. We launched our agency brand, identity. Really was sort of this no wrong door approach to help connect San Francisco's with our services. Really was a very innovative visionary communications director. We will certainly miss her leadership. In the interim, Joe Malika from her team will be the acting communications director. A lot of activity in our DEIB office, Office of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, Embolging. I just want to highlight a few things. The first is, we are, of course, proceeding with the implementation of our Racial Equity Action Plan. And we're hosting an agency-wide racial equity town hall that will take place on March 30th. This is really to further socialize the agency's racial equity action plan with staff, engage the agency with our racial equity concepts, and have as best we can over virtual, you know, this virtual medium, a dialogue. A town hall-type dialogue, which we'll see if we can pull that off in this, in this environment. Also, in April, the DEIB office will be launching what we're calling the Champions of Racial Equity Program, which is 21 days of self-directed micro-learning about racial equity. And this program will be supported also by agency-wide racial equity training, targeted training for management on how to lead with equity as a focus. We're also launching a racial equity newsletter to keep staff informed and updated on the racial equity work that's going on. Also as a way to acknowledge diversity and cultural events, things like Black History Month, Latino Heritage Month, and things like that. We're also beginning to, the process to select a vendor to provide racial equity training and coaching to HSA's executive team, which includes program directors. It also includes commissioners, and this is part of the city's racial equity ordinance that commissioners be trained in racial equity. And so I raise this, obviously, because it will impact the five of you. We're still in the early process of selecting a vendor, and at some point, that contract would probably come before you for approval. We're also working within HR to track diversity and equity metrics, things like hiring, promotion, performance, performance plans, really so we can track the impact of our racial equity work. And then we're also launching a mentorship program to support staff in terms of their professional development to mentor with higher-level, higher-level employees at HSA, sort of executive teams, members being mentors for staff at lower levels of the organization. So shifting gears real quick to finance and budget. I mentioned the 600 and the investment of federal dollars, about $630 million or so into the city and county. Hold on, sorry. Let's see. Sorry, background noise. Oh, okay. So $630 million, the federal dollars, coming into the city and county, which obviously mitigates any sort of deficit that the city was operating under. It remains to be seen, though, how that money will be appropriated by the board, whether it's a one-time, one-year, whether it's spread out over a couple of years. So that's a dialogue that will be occurring between the mayor and the Board of Supervisors, and certainly within the budget hearings. Our revenue situation, just independent of that federal investment, our revenue situation is strong. As you know, we didn't have to make any programmatic reductions because we were able to meet our reduction targets in February with, with revenue. And then on the state side, again, independent of the federal investment from the stimulus act, state revenues continue to be stronger than projected. Capital gains, sales tax even, property tax revenue are all stronger than projected. And so we'll see higher revenue in the May revise. So we are, you know, despite COVID and the economic impact COVID had, we are in a pretty strong position financially as an, as an agency and as a city for now. Because you look out in the out-years, it's really based on the pace of economic recovery, and we can show weakness in the out-years, but right now, we're looking, we're looking good. A couple of other announcements in terms of personnel. Well, a new, we have a now newly-appointed permanent contracts director, Esperanza Sapien. We appointed, I believe, last week. And so obviously, given the interaction of our contracts division and you all, that's a critical hire for us and for you. And then Luwena Kim, who has been our HR Director for over seven years, has actually been appointed the HR Director for the largest city department, the Department of Public Health. So congratulations to Luwena, but that's our loss. And as she was really, you know, a stable leader in HR and really had moved that division significantly forward in her tenure. Really happy to announce that Katrina Williams, who is HSA's Learning Organization and Development Manager, has stepped up to be acting HR Director. And Katrina, I'm sure will do a fantastic job in that role and really happy that she's taken on a very large responsibility. Within our divisions, in SF BenefitsNet, the big news there, and again, good news out of the federal government, I love saying that. The public charge rule that the Trump administration expanded. Basically, Trump administration wanted to apply the public charge rule to all non-citizens, to non-citizens who were applying for a whole range of benefits that weren't formerly considered public charge. Things like Medi-Cal, public housing, childcare supports. Whereas the prior rule was simply cash assistance. So the, on March 9th, the US Court of Appeals reinstated the 1999 public charge guidance. And the Biden administration announced that it would no longer enforce the 2019 public charge rule that the Trump administration put forward. So we're back to what we were before, meaning that non-citizens, legal non-citizens would not have receipt of important benefits count against them on their path towards citizenship, which is great news. In Jobs Now, kind of a neat thing that's going to be going on with Jobs Now. The World Bank learned about our Jobs Now program and has invited us to present our program as part of a knowledge exchange in a global, a virtual global event that they're holding around social protection and jobs, sort of global practice. And I believe Uni-Tie from our division will be presenting, along with representatives from Brazil, Nigeria, and Ethiopia on May 25th. So on this, just nice recognition from So on this, just nice recognition from, you know, an international institution around the effectiveness of our Jobs Now program. You know, kudos and congratulations to the Jobs Now team for continuing to do excellent work. I do want to mention, I've talked a lot about stimulus, we're doing locals, we have local stimulus activity as well. And I want to bring to your attention three initiatives that are running through HSA that the mayor green-lighted for us last month. If you may, if you recall, in the budget that passed last June, June of 2020, it was a significant investment in Jobs Now, about over $8 million to expand Jobs Now. What happened, of course, is we hit a surge in the holiday season, right after we launched that expansion, which basically put the brakes on the expansion of Jobs Now because the economy shut down again. And so we have proposed, we proposed to the mayor's office and they green-lighted, using that money to instead, because there's significant savings building up, to do a local investments in three areas. The first area is using 1.75 million to support a one-time payment of $250 immediately to families that were eligible for the Working Families Credit last fall. And which means about 4,000 families will receive that $250 immediately, plus $250 when they file the file taxes and get the Working Families Credit for the current year. And then we'll continue those investments moving forward over into the next year as well, which means, trying to simplify this as much as I can, the upshot is, instead of $500 that they would have received for the Working Families Credit for current year and 2022, they're actually going to be getting $1,000, 250 backdated, and then 250 this year and then moving forward. The families that tend to benefit from this and who have applied in the past, 25% of our recipients of the Working Families Credit, the local tax credit, are from the southeast, Vis Valley and the Bayview. Another 21% from the Excelsior, and then 16% from Chinatown and Tenderloin. So this investment really is going towards families and households that tend to reside in our lower income areas of San Francisco. It's a targeted way to get funds into our households. We're also redirecting $3 million to provide $600 in direct cash payments for 5,000 immigrant households who are not eligible for federal stimulus relief because of their documentation status. And so it's a way to say, for our working immigrant families, even though the feds don't recognize you in terms of being eligible to receive funds, we want to do something locally. And so we estimate about 5,000 families will be able to get $600 direct cash payment. It's also important to note that low-income, undoc households who file taxes will receive $1,200 through the state's Golden State Stimulus package, so 1,200 from the state, $600 locally. And then lastly, is $3.5 million to create 30 new career pathways, program slots, which basically are paths to city employment for successful Jobs Now graduates. And these positions are in HSA, Wren Park, and we're expanding to other departments as well. It's basically a path to city employment for very successful Jobs Now participants. Moving on into family and children's services, good news around vaccinations for our foster youth, due to the efforts of public health and our partnership with them, all foster youth aged 16 to 21 are immediately eligible for vaccines. So basically, they get to jump the line for individuals aged 16, 21, based on their status as being in foster care. And then once children are, children under 15, or children 15 and under are eligible for a vaccine, or once the science shows that they can receive the vaccine without harm, kids in foster care will also go to the front of the line due to DPH's prioritization, which is great news for our foster kid. We now have three COVID-19 emergency foster homes. The resource families have been vaccinated and trained and ready to take minors who happen to be COVID positive. We are now doing adoptions twice a month, rather than once a month, so we can obviously now do twice as many adoptions of kids out of foster care than we could prior. A lot of little announcements here, kind of run through the list. A neat program that was started by a group of students at Lowell High School, they created what they're calling a birthday club for foster youth, and they plan to organize fundraisers in order to purchase birthday gifts for foster youth under the age of 18, so we can give them little gifts for, give them gifts for their birthdays. I mentioned the extension of non-minor dependents over the age of 21. We are continuing to serve them through June of 21, and it's likely that we will be continuing to serve them through December of 21, which, of course, will continue to grow that caseload as they otherwise would have transitioned down at age 21. And then lastly, a staffing announcement, another one, we have promoted, appointed, and now it's a promotion, Nikon Guffy is the new program director over what we call the case section in Family and Children's, which is the front end. He has been in the acting program director role since last year, been a great leader to staff and really a good presence in the community. She began her career in 2000 in Family and Children's Services and has promoted up through the ranks, so very pleased to announce. With that very lengthy report, I'll pause and open up two questions from commissioners. Take a sip of coffee.
Great report, Trent. Are there any, any questions from members of the commission?
Yeah, I have a question. It's a wonderful report, Trent, and I just wanted to ask in light of the shootings that we've seen around the country, whether the agency has any program involving guns?
Commissioner, I think I heard you say, is the agency doing anything around sort of, in response to gun violence?
Yeah.
Yeah, not really, Commissioner.
I'm not suggesting we invent something.
We really, we really haven't. You know, the Department of Public Health has some, you know, violence prevention-related work, and we, of course, do a lot of DV work, but nothing really specific to kind of the mass shooting. Well, actually, I just got a text from, from one of my deputy directors, Noel, reminding, we do have the IPO program, thank you, Noel. The IPO program is the Interrupt, Predict, and Organize Violence Prevention Program under Mayor, that was started under Mayor Lee. Noel reminded me, what that program attempts to do, it's a partnership with adult probation, and it attempts, it identifies individuals who either had a history of violence or gun violence or gang activity, or is in the probation system, and we want to build up structures around those people to prevent them from returning to violence. And so our role in that is placement in Jobs Now, as a way to sort of provide income supports and other supports to individuals to create a real alternative to a return to violence. Again, it's not really mass shooting, you know, you know, what happened in Colorado or Atlanta, but certainly is a strategy that's proven effective in partnership with adult probation at identifying specific individuals who have had a history of violence or gun violence. Thanks, Noel, for jogging my memory on that one.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that. It's better to prevent it before it happens.
Yeah. Any other questions?
James McCray? James McCray, I wanted to ask Mr. Rohr, could you share again the breakdown of this $21,000 that will be a stimulus into the families? How is that working? How do we participate in it? How do our staff help our folk receive that kind of money?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Commissioner. So we're going to, we're going to include that, the breakdown in the minutes, because it's important to get that out publicly, because it really is such a big investment. So a lot, the bulk of the money will go directly from the feds to these families. You know, if they, you know, if they file taxes, and largely they do, the money would go in either direct deposit or actually a physical check to the addresses, and that would be the $1,400 per person stimulus money, as well as the $3,600 per child in terms of the child tax credit, the earned income tax credit, the same, and the child dependent care tax credit the same way. The Working Families Credit is a local investment that is tied to them filing for the EITC, and we identify them through that, and that's about 4,000 or so. And then the last, the Golden State Stimulus, at least for the Cowworks recipients of Golden State Stimulus, that will flow through, through our agency, through a Cowworks grant augmentation. So it's sort of, you know, bits and pieces. What we haven't done, Commissioner, and you sort of raise an idea in my mind, or a question, is alerting our families that this is coming, right? So they're not magically appear, something magically appears in their bank account, and they have no idea where it came from, right? So I think it might be a good idea to work with our communications team to get out sort of just pushing out information materials, saying this money is coming your way. And perhaps looking at some of our community-based organizations that help with money management, budgeting and money management for our lower-income households. I know that we have partnered with some in the past, and I think Mayor's Office of Housing and Community Development probably does some of that work as well. So I think kind of a two-pronged information campaign that this is there, and then potential connections to helping manage that money well. The other area, Commissioner, that's a big one, is that a lot that thousands, literally thousands of families in San Francisco will avail themselves of is that rental assistance, the 50, let me look at my number here, where'd it go? $56 million of rental assistance coming locally to, for families to be able to apply through a portal that's being set up by Mayor's Office of Housing. And so getting the word out on that one is huge, because $56 million can really go a long way at preventing evictions. Those are the three biggies I see, or the two biggies I see, the tax credits and that, and that rental assistance. Anyway, I don't know if that addressed your question or not, but those are my free-floating thoughts on that.
Any further comments or questions? If not, we're going to move on to item five, which is the presentation of our March 2021 Employee of the Month, Krista Dario, Eligibility Worker for CAP Carrying Section. And also, from her family attending our meeting today is her sister, Virginia, who works as a deputy city attorney, and I believe her daughter, Simone, may be online also. So welcome to her family members. Krista is an eligibility worker with CAP Carrying Section. She has been with the Human Service Agency and the County Adult Assistance Program, otherwise known as CAP, for 24 years. She is the lead worker for assigned unit and staff have great respect and admiration for her. She manages the unit when the supervisor is not available. She ensures all tasks are assigned and completed, and clients receive the needed services that CAP provides. When staff require assistance resolving problematic tasks, she guides them in troubleshooting to get the desired outcome. When Krista joined CAP, she was assigned the caseload of clients who were employed and had income. Krista's vast experience and knowledge with the Income Disregard Program and CAP made her the in-house expert and the go-to person for staff needing assistance in that area. When CAP transitioned to a unit banking model, Krista voluntarily trained all of the CAP Carrying staff on the Income Disregard Program. Although it is beyond her responsibilities, she always graciously offers staff for assistance and expertise. CAP is a forever-evolving program and requires the input from staff to successfully implement the changes. Krista readily volunteers to join committees and work groups to represent the workers. She consistently provides suggestions for better business process that cap and more efficient and client-centric. Krista's voluntary work is extensive. Some of her volunteer assignments have included Q-Flo preparation for CAP, handbook revision work group, case correction work group, Cal-Win how-to revisions to multiply form creations and revisions. Currently, she is involved with the Cal-Win Cal-Saw's Policy Work Group to prepare CAP for the transition to the new case management system. She is also the lead in CAP Generic Process Work Group, which is responsible for getting CAP Carrying business processes aligned throughout the section as CAP becomes a section banking model to better serve clients. She is an ambassador to the ever-present changes within CAP. She helps staff become acclimated to newly introduced processes and systems. She encourages her colleagues to accept and embrace the changes by modeling and explaining the benefits of the charges. It is with gratitude and pride that we honor Krista and present her with the March Employee of the Month Award. Congratulations. Mr. Rohr, do you like to make any comments?
I would. Congratulations, Christine. I have a sort of a personal connection, because Christine and I were together in induction training at the Human Service, that then was Department of Human Services in 1996. We were hired closely around the same time. She was, I believe, a clerk, she was an admin assistant for the then director of the, is then called, I think, the GA program. And I was hired as an analyst, and so we got to share a training class together, and it's always nice to reconnect with her down the line, but every now and then we'll run into each other and a joke about that. But so that's the personal side. On the professional side, you know, to have Christine there, I think, 24, 25 years now, and to move up within now CAP from being the admin, admin support to her eligibility work, really shows, I think, her commitment to APP, her commitment to the population. It's not always an easy population to work with, a lot of barriers, a lot of challenges among the CAP population, and really in need of significant help from us. And I'm just so pleased that we could honor her, not only for her great work in the near term, but for her longer-term work and commitment to the CAP program. And again, on a personal note, I'm proud of her for sticking with the organization and moving up and being promoted, and it's certainly well-deserved. And I'm definitely going to share this honor and let her former boss, Dorothy Anderson, know that she is honored this month, but I'm sure she will be very pleased for that. Congratulations, I can't see you on the screen anywhere, but congratulations, Christine. I'm really happy that you're recognized in this way.
Would you like to make any comments, Krista?
Yes, please. Thank you, Commissioner Khan. I would just like to thank you all for the recognition. And I also would like to thank Gary Bell and Edgar Pagaduan for nominating me. They have both been a huge part of my growth and learning here at CAP, especially my supervisor, Gary Bell, because he's always supported and encouraged me, which has enabled me to, and given me confidence to volunteer for all of these committees. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank my amazing unit. They've always trusted me and been supportive of my roles and my time here at CAP. And I just wanted to say thanks again for everybody's support. I really appreciate it, and this is a great honor. Thank you. And I just wanted to say thanks again for everybody's support. I really appreciate it, and this is a great honor. Thank you.
Thank you once again. Moving on to item five, our consent caler, consent calendar. Do any of my fellow commissioners want to remove an item for individual discussion? If not, can I ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. Moving on to it's, well, item seven. Um, under Commission Business, Item A, requesting adoption of a resolution proclaiming April twenty twenty-one as Child Abuse Prevention Month, calling on Joan Miller with the Family and Children Services and Jenny Pearlman with Safe and Sound.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning.
How are you? Um, Jenny and I'll just take turns uh reading this. I'll read the first half. Jenny, you can read the second half. And we appreciate your consideration for um recognizing April twenty twenty-one as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas child maltreatment impacts not just the child, but the family, the community, and society at large. The physical, mental, and emotional effects of maltreatment persist long after child maltreatment occurs and result in ongoing costs to society. And whereas child abuse continues to be a persistent and pervasive problem in San Francisco with three thousand eight hundred and forty allegations of child abuse and five hundred and forty-one substantiations in twenty twenty, the preliminary estimations of the cumulative financial impact to the San Francisco community for the five hundred and thirty-two verified child victims in twenty nineteen is three hundred and eighteen million dollars. Abused children are more likely to experience negative educational health and behavioral outcomes, which contribute to many of San Francisco's challenges, such as homelessness, chronic health issues, and high school dropout rates. And whereas rates of both allegations and substantiation of child abuse disproportionately impact biracial people of color families, requiring us to address longstanding issues of structural and systemic racism. Society has a moral and ethical obligation to protect families from unnecessary intervention of child welfare and ensure the availability of services and supports that strengthen all families. And Jenny?
Thank you. Whereas direct investment in social programs for children and families and community protective factors such as economic supports, community institutions and services, high-quality childcare, and policies and educational campaigns that promote equity and inclusion in change social norms, prevent child abuse, and provide short and long-term benefits, far outweighing the overall cost of downstream interventions to address the costly results of child maltreatment and trauma. And whereas effective prevention efforts succeed because of collaboration between community and public organization, recognition of the strengths, experiences, and wisdom of families, and accessible non-stigmatizing services. San Francisco has invested in several key prevention strategies, including the Family Resource Center Initiative jointly funded by the Human Services Agency, First Five, and the Department of Child, Youth, and Families. And whereas it is essential to continue to invest in child abuse prevention and raise awareness about child abuse and the need to support all vulnerable children and their families. Healthy children and families create the foundation for communities to thrive. And now, Joan, do you want to take the last part?
Sure. And now, therefore, we, the Human Services Commission, join with others, including the Human Services Agency and Safe and Sound, to recognize April twenty twenty-one as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We urge all San Franciscans to take shared responsibility for child and family well-being and for ensuring that every family has what they need to be safe, healthy, and strong.
Do we need a motion?
Thank you, Joan and Jenny. Can I, is there any public comment on this? If not, then I would like to ask for a motion to approve.
Shall move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item B, John Sutakawa, uh, requesting authorization to enter into a new grant agreement with Alternative Family Services for the Emergency Placement Program for Foster Children and Youth for a period of March first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of five million two hundred thousand dollars plus a ten percent contingy contingency for a total amount not to exceed five million seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. John?
Good morning, President Khan and Commissioners. I'm John Sutakawa, Program Director in Family and Children Services. So the Human Services Agency requests authorization to enter into a new grant agreement with Alternative Family Services for the provision of the Emergency Placement Program. Uh, the Emergency Placement Program was created as a pilot originally when the Child Protection Center was closed in late two thousand nineteen. The Child Protection Center, or CPC, was closed due to changes from the continuum of care reform at a state level, which decreased the use of group homes and other facilities in the placement of children. And so while the CPC was not a residential facility, the state directed San Francisco to close the facility due to issues around the the length of time that children were staying there. So when replacing the CPC, the department created two programs. One for placement of foster children in family homes uh through AFS, and another program with Seneca for the placement of children with higher needs. So this program uh provides emergency bed spaces for the children. So rather than children staying in a facility while placement is being sought, uh, we're able to place the the children in the family homes uh when other placements are not immediately available. And these temporary placements are intended to be short-term, from a few hours to up to three days, although there is room for extension if needed. Uh, the contract provides ten beds with the ability to flex up to twenty-two beds. And the contract has worked very smoothly since its inception. There's been great coordination between AFS, which is a foster family agency in the county, and they have been able to receive children consistently to be able to put them into family settings. So I'm available to answer any questions regarding the contract. Tracy Burris, who's our Program Director over the Southeast Program and over the Placement Unit, is also available to answer questions. Tamara Reyes and Craig Barton from AFS are also here to represent the organization and to answer any specific questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there any uh public comment? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Item C, requesting authorization to enter into a new grant agreement with Seneca Family of Agencies for the provision of permanency assessments for the period of January first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars plus a ten percent contingency for a total amount not to exceed seven hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve? Oh, sorry, sorry, Jeffrey.
That's okay.
Go right ahead.
You want to? That's all right. Good morning, President Khan and Commissioners. Um, my name's Jack from the guy. I'm a um Program Support Analyst with Family and Children Services, and I am here to request retroactive um authorization to enter a new contract agreement with Seneca Family of Agencies. Um, the period will run from January first, two thousand twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Um, the contract is to provide permanency assessments, which are required part of the resource family approval process, which the county uses to um to approve families to accept placement of foster children. The county has seen a sustained increase in demand for these evaluations over the past two years. Um, and we look at Seneca as a um an ideal candidate to partner in addressing that need. Seneca um has previously played a key role in helping the county um fill that gap in the prior two years. They also helped close um the need for um conversion families. These are families that were licensed in their previous uh the the previous criteria prior to resource family approval. Um, over the past two years, Seneca has accepted a hundred and ninety-nine referrals from the county. Um, of those, it completed a hundred percent um in a timely manner. Um, again, we we look at Seneca as the ideal partner for this this grant. Um, and I would welcome any questions or comments from the board.
Move approval. Remind me later.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to item D, um Marlin Sanchez, requesting authorization to enter into a new contract agreement with Public Consulting Group for CalWorks Outcomes and Accountability Review Implementation and Technical Assistance for the period of April first, twenty twenty-one through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars plus a ten percent contingency for a total amount not to exceed a hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Marlene Sanchez, Community Service Specialist for Welfare to Work Services. And the Department of Benefits and Family Support Services requests authorization to enter into a new contract with Public Consulting Group or PCG. Uh, the purpose of the contract is to provide professional services for CAL or implementation and planning that includes consultation, technical assistance, and needed facilitation to San Francisco CalWorks program. The California Department of Social Services established the California CalWorks Outcomes and Accountability Review, or CALOR, to facilitate a local accountability system for quality improvement in county CalWorks programs and in the collection and dissemination of best practices in service delivery. The overall goal of the contract is to assist CalWorks staff in completing the components of the CALOR process. Uh, if this contract is granted, uh, PCG will work closely with the CalWorks planning team in two phases. The first phase is for consultation to identify current strengths and needs and to review current data and other inputs for the preparation of the county self-assessment report. In the second phase, PCG will assist in the initial planning for developing the system implementation plan for continuous quality improvement. Um, I am available to answer your questions, and we also have Deborah or Deb Joffe and Paul Leftwood uh from PCG uh to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions from anyone? And I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item E, uh, calling on Jamil Bellamide, requesting authorization to modify the existing grant agreement with San Francisco Marin Food Bank for the provision of CalFresh and Medi-Cal promotion for the period of July first twenty twenty-one through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, in the additional amount of eight hundred and ninety-six, seven hundred and fifty dollars plus a ten percent contingency for a ri- varied total grant amount not to exceed two million two hundred and three thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Good morning, President Khan and Commissioners. Um, I am Jamil Bellam. I'm a, I'm Jamil Bellamide, a manager with CalFresh and Medi-Cal, also known as SF Benefits Net. Um, the SF Benefits Net program requests authorization to modify the existing grant with the San Francisco Marin Food Bank. Um, the San Francisco Marin Food Bank will partner um with us to provide application assistance and promotion of CalFresh and Medi-Cal benefits to low-income San Franciscans. Um, through the use of various direct service initiatives like active outreach and marketing, informational sessions and workshops, application clinics at community-based organizations, we aim to increase participation and awareness of CalFresh and Medi-Cal. Um, additionally, the San Francisco Marin Food Bank will undertake indirect service initiatives such as educating a network of community-based organizations about CalFresh and Medi-Cal and provide training on how to provide application assistance for their uh community members. Um, this continued partnership will help to increase access to nutritious food and healthcare for low-income San Franciscans. Um, I'm available to answer any questions regarding the services. Um, Elizabeth Leo, the contract manager, can also respond to questions uh regarding the contracting process. Thank you.
Any questions from members of the commission?
I'd like to speak.
Yes, go right ahead.
I have been involved and not know about the Food Bank for many, many years, and it's an exemplary organization doing fantastic and most valuable work, and I'm very pleased to see this. So I support it.
Well, then I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve, and let's use what you just said, Rita, as making a motion.
Glad to make the motion.
Okay, and a second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item eight on our agenda is to announce the reappointment of Commissioner Semel to another term as a member of our commission. So congratulations, Rita.
Thank you. It's an honor to serve.
Man. Amen.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Semel, for agreeing to serve another term.
Um, item eight, well, that was item eight. Moving on to public comment, is there any public comment?
Hello?
If not, then I have a very brief some closing remarks that I'd like to make. Before we adjourn, I'd like to take a moment to honor San Francisco's Asian communities. At a time when bigotry and malice are directed against some of our neighbors, we should remember their foundational role in making and keeping this community a progressive and embracing home to all, regardless of background or national origin. And I'd also like to further, by moving on to adjournment and request that we adjourn our meeting in honor of Mr. Vichy Radapakdi, who's the eighty-four-year-old gentleman gentleman who was violently slammed to the ground and lost his life in San Francisco. And if we do adjourn in memory of him, I'd like to try to find out how we can reach his family and let them know that. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
If I make the motion, but I want to thank you, Commissioner Khan, for recognizing that, because it has been such a a sad day when one San Franciscan takes up arms against another. So thank you for that, and I move for adjournment.
Our meeting is adjourned. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Rohr, have a good month, folks.
Thanks, Jim.
You all. Take care of yourselves.
Thank you all.